Oh, okay.
Lovely to be here.
I'd like to open the Town of Duck Planning Board Regular Meeting. It's Wednesday, April 13th, and it looks like it's 6:30 to me.
Are you sure your microphone is on?
My microphone is on.
I'm making more noise, but I can't hear you.
Well, can't hear that? I can hear it. Are you okay?
Yeah, make sure you speak if your mic is set.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
This is live stream, too, sir.
All right.
Yes.
All right, let's move on. We're open. We'll move on to public comments. Does anyone have public comments that would like to appear? All right, come on up to the podium, state your name and your address.
Whoever.
Yeah, whoever.
My name is Reed Carter, and I live on 153 Speckle Trout, which is in Duck Ridge Shores, which is directly accessed by -- off of Dune Road, which is right across the street from this project.
May I interrupt and say you've got three minutes? Okay.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank this group for listening to us. I think it's great to have, you know, some people who are weighing in on these projects that are proposed. Secondly, I'd like to say I'm generally for it. I like the fact they bring a restaurant and a couple more stores and probably the boardwalk coming to it. But I've looked at the plans, and I have a few problems and objections and a few suggestions if I can fit them in. First problem is I think the way they proposed it, they've kind of overbuilt -- I don't know who they are, one of y'all guys maybe, but they have overbuilt that piece of property so much that they're asking for exceptions to two or three of the rules that were set up about separation of the buildings, the access to buildings back from the setback, and particularly the number of parking spaces. And they're looking for those exceptions, and I take exception to granting those, and I'd like to recommend that you -- the advisory board does not grant those exceptions. First of all, we know parking is the most easily identifiable thing in the short supply. For example, I could not park here for my three minutes. I had to park where there's now a sign in Loblawly Pines that says, "You have to be doing business here to park there." And you're expecting to have five fewer spaces in this location. Secondly, they have squeezed the buildings together so that there's going from 20 feet that's normally expected to 10 feet and asking for permission to do that, make that exception. Thirdly, the restaurant is saying, "I'm going to put in 42 seats and seven outside things," but somewhere buried in there, I saw where up to 18 more people could be accommodated. So I guess they're asking for an -- maybe that's a built-in exception for the rule. When I had my store over here, the beer store by Growlers to Go, I had to come before this board, and I was restricted in putting only four chairs for people to sit and drink beer in my beer store because of the lack of parking. I also see that they've created a -- there's two access roads that come into the property for parking, but they're dead ends of each time. You have to have room to turn around and go about, and they probably didn't have quite enough space when they packed the extra buildings in there to have it so that it's a circular pattern. I did notice that there are double yellow lines that you have to cross to get into the thing, so I don't know how it's going to be legally permitted for somebody to come from the south to turn left into it or from the -- and then people leaving and going back to the north would have to cross the double lines to go out. Another way that they have overbuilt that property is that they've built the -- I have an interest in the land that's right next to it, and that Duck Ridge Shores has a little piece of land they call vacant land, but it's really our neighborhood park. And they've built the boardwalk right up to the property line and left no room for any vegetation and disguising, even though there's three feet between the side that's facing Blue Point for vegetation.
Sir, thank you. We'll keep that in mind during our deliberation.
Okay. Anyway, so my recommendation -- can I just -- one more sentence, I'll be finished?
Quickie.
You know, my recommendation is you've -- they brought together a plan, which is overbuilding the size of that lot and requiring specific exceptions. And I would suggest they're also putting a third story, which is an unusual thing in the commercial area. All but 99% of the commercial buildings only have two stories in them. And so it's too high, it's looming into the lot. They've squeezed it so that we're right on the lot line. The parking is insufficient.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak right now?
My name is Dennis Wochek, and I live at 103 Dune Road. And the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank Sandy Cross and Jim Gould for spending time with me last week to allow me to look at the full-size set of plans so I could get a better eye on them than what I can do on a computer and just zooming into a small part. So, thank you. I submitted correspondence to the planning board, and hopefully everyone's had the opportunity to look at that. And I have specific issues that I think are problematic with this site. To begin with, I would say that the ingress and egress to this site is problematic. Neither existing driveway, where the new driveways are proposed, have a left-turn lane to accommodate them. The town is doing a complete rebuild of that road. Hopefully, that project starts late this year. And I've looked at those plans, and I certainly think that it is feasible for the left-turn lane to be extended to at least service the south driveway of this proposal. So I would like the planning commission to approach the council to have that added or at least looked at on the town's project. Secondly, the north ingress-egress, the location of it is problematic. If it wasn't there and somebody wanted to build it there now, it probably would not be allowed to be built because of its location. It's on the horizontal curve, it's in the influence zone of the Dune Road intersection. So I would like to make sure, or I'd like the town to make sure they discuss with NC DOT the possibilities for that. If it's going to be allowed to stay there, I believe that it should be made a right-hand turn-only ingress-egress. Third, we are talking about, and it's even in the documents, that the parking in the north area is meant for maybe employees and residents. I would suggest that that parking lot be signed that way and to try to assure that the use of it is minimal. Fourth, I would like to say that I think the onsite circulation is problematic. Both parking lots are dead ends, and in looking at the parking and paving standards, they indicate new parking areas on commercial lots shall be connected unless the town determines that topography or other natural features prevents it. I do not believe there's any topography or natural features that would prevent that. And then also, the same standards say that no parking aisle serving the general public that contains more than 10 parking spaces shall dead end. And I do believe the southern lot has 11 spaces, so that exceeds that requirement. And then it says, "Any parking aisle that dead ends shall be provided a suitable turnaround." I do not see a turnaround on the north parking area. On the south parking area, which is the next item I'm going to talk about.
Thank you, sir. We've got to deliberate later on, so you can be a part of the conversation as we go along as well, if you're finished.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to?
Chairman Bluth, I have copies of his comments if you want them in your hand.
Did someone else want to speak? I saw some hands back there. No hands? Thank you. All right, hearing no more public comments, we'll move on to new business. Business is an S U P of 22-001 is the application by Bissell Professional Group on behalf of property owner Antum Enterprises. This will be for a special use permit to redevelop the existing property in the Village Commercial District. I'll not speak the rest of it. Donna, would you like to get up and speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad. I'm going to go over here to the side. You know, Sandy's going to pull up the site plan so it's up there while I speak. Good evening. My name is Donna Creef, and I'm --
I can hear you.
Okay. Let me pull that down, then. Sorry about that. How about that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I apologize for that. I'm out of practice. I haven't spoke at a podium in quite some time. So my name is Donna Creef, and I've been asked by the Town of Duck to help them while Mr. Hurd is out on medical leave. And so I'm going to go through the staff comments. Feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. And I'm going to apologize in advance because I'm not as familiar with the duck zoning regulations as someone who does this on a full-time basis such as Sandy is. And so if I misspeak, by all means, I'm apologizing in advance. And there's going to be some things, particularly in some of the comments from the audience tonight about the parking and the dead ends and all that, that I'll let the town engineer address as well. So as the chairman said, this is the special use permit for 1248 Duck Road, and this is the redevelopment of an existing site that's been there for some time. There is a building that's already on the property that was built back in the 80s, I believe, and the property owners are proposing to demolish that structure and replace it with three structures. And so it's not really new construction so much as it is redevelopment of an existing site, and I think that's an important point to keep in mind as you make your deliberations tonight. It is a special use permit because of the proposal to include a restaurant. Restaurants are conditional uses or special uses under the Village Commercial zoning. And then the fact that there's three structures on the property, that is considered a group development, and that also triggers special use review. The property, as I said, is 1248 Duck Road and it is zoned Village Commercial. The structure there was built in 1985 and consists of 6,000 square feet of heated space approximately. The lot area is just over 30,000 square feet. The adjoining property to the north, as the one speaker mentioned, is owned by the Duck Ridge Shores subdivision, and they use that as an amenity area. The property to the -- that is zoned Village Commercial as well. The property to the south is developed commercially as the Duck Waterfront Shops, which is zoned Village commercially. And the property across the street there is a subdivision of the property, the residential lot 13 in Duck Ridge Shores and that zoned RS1 residential. There are several sections of the zoning ordinance that are applicable that we will be discussing tonight, and I'm going to go through my comments. I don't mean to be lengthy in my comments so that you guys can have your deliberations, but there are some things that need to be included in the record since it is a special use permit review. The existing real estate building will be demolished, and three new mixed-use structures are proposed. They are labeled as Buildings A, B, and C on the site plan. They will include commercial on the first story and residential on the second story of Buildings A and B. Building C will just include the restaurant. All of the square footages of the building are less than the 5,000-square-foot gross floor area limitation of the Village Commercial zoning. The buildings -- the group development section of the zoning ordinance section 156.059 requires 20 feet of separation unless there is a fire suppression system proposed for the structures, and they are showing a 10-foot separation. So we are assuming that there will be a fire suppression system in there. We have not received the building plans yet, the specific for the building plans, but that'll be something that will be verified during the review of the building plans themselves. The restaurant is proposed for 42 indoor seats with seven additional seasonal seats provided, and Section 156.094 allows for an increase of 25% for seasonal seats for 18 persons, whichever is less, and the proposal is consistent with that. The renderings of the building were included in your packet, and when they first submitted those renderings, there were some things that were not quite consistent with the standards for commercial development and the duck zoning ordinance, and they have been revised to include more features that are consistent with the building plans. They have some more breaks in the structures there, they have the awnings, and they are, at least in my opinion -- and again, I'm not the one that's -- I'm not used to looking at these plans for the town, but I did review the notes that Mr. Hurd had left, and they do appear to be consistent with the building plans. Section 156.065 pair and B pair and 1 addresses the structural setbacks and a reduction that is established in the zoning ordinance. It allows a reduction of up to 50%. The Village Commercial establishes a 20-foot rear yard setback, and they are asking for a setback of 10 feet. I will say that when they first submitted the site plan, they were asking for a setback that was less than that, and they have revised the plan so that all of the buildings comply with that 10-foot setback. There is a total of 34.5 spaces that are required based on the parking calculations in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance also allows for a reduction in the parking spaces of up to five spaces or 20%, and they are asking for that reduction. So they are showing a total of 30 spaces on there. The outdoor lighting plans, the landscaping plans will need to be reviewed for consistency as well as the signage and those supplemental plans. Then the review and approval of those should be included as a condition of the approval or your recommendation for approval tonight. We do have other reports from the town engineer. Mr. Robinson will, I'm sure, address those in more detail. The fire department, the police department, the water department, the environmental health department, KMA have all indicated that they have no issues with this. As I stated, there are some sections that they are asking for reductions in the structural setbacks and in the parking that is provided for in Section 156.065 of the town code, and they establish five criteria that have to be met in order for those reductions to be made, and my staff report outlines them, and I'm going to hit on those real briefly. The development proposal must be consistent with the vision and the comprehensive plan. The proposal must be consistent with the scale, character, and function of Duck Village. The development must contain many of the characteristics established in the guidelines. The modification should be the least amount necessary, and the modification should not negatively impact adjacent properties or the surrounding area. The plan also has to be reviewed for consistency with the duck vision statement and the comprehensive land use plan. There are nine policies outlined in the staff report that are applicable to this. The redevelopment plans incorporate bike and pedestrian improvements, so it addresses those policies about bike and pedestrian improvements. The impervious surfaces will be decreasing, and so that's consistent with the policies. It's enhancing the character, and as I said, those nine policies are outlined in the staff report there. I'm just reading through my policies here. Bear with me for a second. So based on my review of the plan and my conversations with Sandy and my review of the notes that Mr. Hurd had in the file, it's my opinion that the plan is consistent with the Duck Village Commercial zoning district. There are 12 conditions that are included in your staff report that are recommended to be included in your recommendation that goes to the Duck Town Council. And I'm going to stop right there. Some of the public comments that I heard mentioned a dead end in the parking lot, and I'm going to let Mr. Robinson address that. I'm not sure how the Town of Duck typically addresses what they consider a dead end, and that's just my lack of not having the past history with that standard in the zoning ordinance there. I will say that there have been, based on my conversations with Sandy, there have been other modifications that the town has allowed for commercial development, and the fact that the zoning ordinance actually establishes the sections that may be modified reflects the intent of the ordinance and that sometimes you need to make those adjustments. And so I'm going to stop right there. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them and other than that.
Fine, Donna, stay there, and we'll have questions for you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Sandy.
And both of you. Anyone have a question for Donna at this time? You mentioned the engineer. You want to say something real quick about those two things, about the?
The turnaround?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to clarify from our end, that's all.
Yeah. Now, we actually studied this in some depth, and there's a decent width drive all in there, and there's not that many parking spaces. I'm talking particularly on the north parking lot, and I really don't have any problems with the way it's configured. I don't know that a turnout would be nice, but I don't know that it's absolutely necessary. And I point to this parking lot right here. It's almost identical situation. There is no -- it's essentially a dead-end parking lot, and it works. You can get in there, you can get out. You know, it's not an ideal situation, but I don't think it's unreasonable to keep it like it is. South lot has the benefit of a handicap access, which generally, well, should always remain open. There's a van accessible space right next to it. That would serve as a functional turnaround, even though you are backing into a handicap access. I don't believe that's an issue at all. We did get some comments from DOT today from the engineer.
I was getting ready to --
And they have -- they don't have any issues with the plan. I'll rephrase that. Tentatively, they don't have any issues with the plan. They said they'd look at it in more detail, but they are comfortable with the two curb cuts. They stated that the way the driveways are configured will actually be better than what's there now, and it will open up for right and left, for cars turning in and cars turning out at the same time. And there's, you know, so to conclude, I'm comfortable with this the way it's designed.
Okay.
Michael James. It was referenced that it is not -- the driveway is not code compliant. Is it your professional opinion that it is compliant with the duck code rather than just your opinion?
Well --
Is it your opinion? Because that was the statement that was made.
I'm sorry?
That's the statement that was made, that it was not in compliance with the duck code.
Well, this is a redevelopment, and they're existing parking lots, and they're reusing the existing parking lots. So I think if this was a brand-new site, if this was a clean slate, they would certainly probably come back in with something a little bit different. But, you know, utilizing the two parking lots that are there, I would assume that the zoning would support it as code compliant. I can't state that 100% certainty.
That was my question. Is it code compliant?
Yes, sir. I will tell you that the comments that the gentleman made, that he sent an email, and they were circulated to myself, and I read them, and I think, as Mr. Robinson said, the key word there is that the code sections that he's referencing are for new commercial and that this is not new commercial, it's redevelopment of an existing commercial site, and that's a very important factor here. And I think that affects how the application of those zoning standards are applied because it's not a fresh site, it's not a blank slate, and it's redevelopment. And so those standards are not -- are for new development, and this is redevelopment, and that's a very important factor, at least from my professional opinion, and I've been a professional planner for some time now, and I will tell you that, in my opinion, it is compliant. As Mr. Robinson said, we did get comments from Mr. David Ott, who is the North Carolina Department of Transportation District Engineer for District One, and his comments were that the two existing ingress and egress were, in his opinion and his review of the site plan, were better than they were going to be improved to an extent that was better in terms of width and ingress and egress. He did not address the left-hand turn lane, and that is certainly something that we could follow up with Mr. Ott's on. And I do know that there have been conversations with the engineer who is doing the Brick Project VB, VHB, and he has reviewed the plans, and he doesn't seem to have an issue with them as well. So that's two engineers that are agreeing, and it's my opinion that it is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the parking standards.
Donna, is the -- I know this is a redevelopment, but it's an entirely different scope as far as the use. There's going to be a lot more traffic in and out of there. When the NC DOT gentleman was reviewing that, is he aware of the significant change in the use of the property?
I'm assuming that he was. He had a copy of the site plan, so I can't say for certainty that he does, but you have to assume that he would acknowledge that there was going to be more traffic there. And certainly, it is redevelopment in that, you know, the parking lots are going to be upgraded and all, and it is a change in intensity of the property there. But it does meet the impervious lot coverage standards. It meets the building height. In fact, the impervious coverage that's there now is going to decrease with the new site through the use of, you know, porous concrete and paving blocks, and the KMA coverage is decreasing as well. And so I think that that's a significant fact, that you're decreasing the impervious coverage on the site, and they're not maxing it out. Some of the speakers use the term "overbuilt," and they're not -- there's some leeway there in the lot coverage. They're not up to the 60% there, so.
Just to clarify the roadway situation, Donna, and like, has there been any attempt to make a change there? I mean, you say they've looked at it and, you know, just curiosity.
A change in what capacity? And that might be something that the engineer from Bissell can address.
Okay, all right. It could be turns.
Are you talking about the travel, I mean, the extending the turn lane?
Yeah.
We had a Zoom conference with the representative from VHB, and they are studying that now.
Okay, so they're looking into it.
I don't know that it's entirely necessary. It would be nice to have, but we've already have -- we're already in a super elevation situation there. Visibility is going to be good for this parking. It's on the outside of the curb, and with the super elevation, we're already starting to shed a lot of water towards the sidewalk. We're going to have to be real careful with the engineering of the stormwater there. Adding another lane is just that much more coming over there. I defer to VHB and see what they come up with, and then I'm sure they'll bring that back to you all to take a look at and see if that's a change you want to make to the plan.
Okay, thank you.
And I might just add that VHB is actively looking at this. They've got -- VHB, who designed the road improvement projects for the Brick Grant, and they have also been talking with NC DOT regarding the crosswalk location and so on and so forth. So that's all in the works, and hopefully we'll have definitive answers from them shortly.
Okay. So it's all being looked at. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mike or Donna? Sandy? You?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I have no questions. Sorry.
Okay. Anybody else?
All right. We'll get at you.
Okay, very good. I'm going to sit back down and --
Yeah, go ahead. I'll briefly open this whether anyone in the -- has a comment, a quick comment that hasn't been asked.
I hear a lot of --
No, you've got to come up there. Say your name and where you live. You've got three minutes. You've got three minutes.
I'm Rick Fagerston. I live at 101 Doone Road. That is directly across from this property. I'm a little concerned about backing up dump trucks at four o'clock in the morning, or garbage trucks at four o'clock in the morning with their beep, 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 beep. I would like to know when they look at parking spaces, are they parking spaces for little cars, middle cars, standard cars, or big cars? As a guy who has a hard time getting in and out of a car, I won't be driving over, by the way. But for those who do have to drive, that have a hard time getting in and out of a car, if you cannot open your door all the way, it is extremely difficult. So that, I think those questions ought to be asked. And I think using the redevelopment as opposed, and using that as a cover, not to have to comply with new development. Because essentially, this is a new development project. They're going to a clean lot and putting up three new buildings in a place where there's only one now. I am deeply concerned about the whole thing and giving exceptions to policy that we have already set for building in this town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Quick.
I'd like some comments about some of the things that were mentioned.
Dennis, I don't recall whether you stated your address when you spoke last time. Could you please identify your address?
Dennis Wolcheck, 103 Doone Road. In regard to access to North Carolina highways, you know, I have the policy of street and driveway, North Carolina highways. I'll just read a couple of sections here. The location of street intersections and driveways is critical for minimizing potential impact of vehicular and pedestrian traffic. In the interest of public safety and mobility, the NC DOT may prohibit, restrict, or modify the placement of a driveway or street along the property owner's front edge. Every effort shall be taken to prevent access connections and median breaks within the functional area of an intersection. This, the northern driveway for this site is in the functional area of the Duck Road, Doone Road intersection. And the changes that they're going to be making or are showing on the plan are going to bring it more into that functional area. So I don't think that's good design. And I think that someone should talk to NC DOT to make sure that they understand where this is and what is happening. And then, just as another gentleman mentioned, this entire site is going to be demolished. It was mentioned that parking areas are going to be reused. They're not going to be. The plans show entirely new construction. If they want to reuse the parking areas, leave them alone, have them like they are. But they're ripping everything out and changing it. And also is noticed the use is different. And so I still say that even if you look at this as a redevelopment, turning is problematic. Using a handicapped aisle for a turnaround, I think is just not at all appropriate. And so in ADA standards, it says, excess aisles shall not overlap the vehicular way. Vehicular way is defined as a route intended for vehicular traffic such as a street, driveway, or parking lot. If this is meant to turn around cars, that's a vehicular way. And that's against the ADA standards. I've got 22 seconds left. Let's see what else I have there. I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. Any else have questions for?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add that the gentleman asked about the width and the size of the parking spaces. And the parking spaces, the zoning ordinance allows parking spaces to be nine by 18 and all of those spaces meet those dimensions on the site plan.
Correct. Did I see a hand back there?
Again, I'm Reed Carter at 153 Speckle Trout Drive. I want to point out, in the parking regulations that you have, it does not account for the additional parking that may be needed for the boardwalk, the termination of the boardwalk. Now, I know you haven't extended the boardwalk over there, but they've shown it on the plan and they've shown it along the side. I know for a fact that every time there's a sunset, that lots of people will, a number of cars will come and park at the waterfront shops in order to access the boardwalk. And it's an end point of the boardwalk. And I heard from Joe Hurd one time that they were planning, at the end of the boardwalk, to put up a informational display. And they're essentially going to make that spot an amenity. And I believe, and this is probably not part of any of your rules that you're following, but I believe that you should acknowledge that that's an amenity that requires some parking access. Secondly, you're planning in this spot to have apartments with three, I think there's six bedrooms planned for this apartment. And those are people that are going to be there all day long, not users of retail space which come in and go out and come in and go out. So a lot of those spaces that you're planning for the parking are going to be kind of locked in. If they're employees, they're going to be locked in there probably longer. So I think you're just, if you look at the way that you have built on this property, you're really overdoing the access to parking. And one of the decisions that you all have to make is, oh, we're going to relax the rules. And in the past, I've seen you not relax the rules on that sort of thing. But maybe that's what you, you might be setting more of a precedent. Another precedent you're setting, I think, I may be using the wrong words, but if you're saying, okay, it's okay to have buildings that are 10 feet apart, even though the rule is 20 feet apart. And I look down and all up and down this area, like the waterfront shops, they're all good spaces between the buildings. And if they followed the rules and y'all didn't grant the exceptions, then they wouldn't put as much stuff on this piece of property. So I really do believe that you're getting ready to approve something that's overbuilt for the property. And they could solve that a couple of ways. They could go from a three-story building, which we don't have in a commercial area now, down to a two-story building. And just have one-bedroom apartments rather than three-bedroom apartments. You know, they could, they could make it, instead of three buildings, make it two buildings that are really connected, the two stores, like we have in Loblaw Lee Pines, are right next to each other. And, but I just think, the bottom line is you're overbuilding this particular lot. And you, as a group, are making a decision, should we relax all the rules? And they've mentioned about four types of assumptions that you're relaxing. And I'm against you relaxing those rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just noticed the clock is down.
You're doing great. Anyone else like to speak? There's no more?
My name is Jay Bloes. I live at 105 Waxwing Court in Duck. I'd like to ask for some clarification. I don't see anything on the submitted documents that indicates any connectivity with the waterfront shop areas to the south. I know that there has been some mention about the fact that there is a concept, perhaps, or thoughts of making connectivity. But I don't see anything on any of these drawings. And I think that that should be explored as a part of this development proposal.
There is actually a, an easement section on the drawing that shows a future proposed connection. Since we don't have the plans from the waterfront shops to resort realty yet, the property owners have agreed that at some point in the future, we would have, they would authorize or will have an easement in place that will allow that connectivity to occur.
Right, because right now it sort of stops there at the entrance to the blue point.
Right, but there, if you look closely at the plans, and I can pull it up for everybody. See right here, there's a possible future, called the boardwalk extension, to the water plaza, to go along.
I was going to say, it implies that needs to circle out and then turn back.
It would need to do that.
But there aren't any concepts created for that yet.
Not at this point.
But that would be on the town as opposed to this development?
To be determined.
Aha. I think it's important to get an answer to that, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, gentlemen, we should be deliberating at this point, then, for some more-
Are we going to hear from the applicant?
Yeah.
What? Are we going to hear from the applicant?
No. Oh, I was going to ask that question. I'm sorry. Is the applicant here or his representative?
Thank you.
All right, left you out. Give us your name anyhow.
I'm just going to set this up so the audience can see this. We have it up on, I'll get it on the screen. So my name is David Clubbitts. I'm a professional engineer that works for BISL Professional Group and Kitty Hawk. You guys have seen me before. Before I dive into this, I'd like to introduce a few other folks that are with me here tonight. The first is Tom Stewart. He's the COO of Resort Realty and is here on behalf of the applicant. The second is Mr. Paul Henriquez. He's a licensed commercial contractor and the owner of PCI Construction. And the last is Mark Caston. He's a licensed architect and partner of the Kahoon and Caston Architectural Firm in Naggs Head. You guys may know some or all of them, but I just wanted to bring them into this because these guys, between all of us, have over 75 years of local design-build experience in the Outer Banks. So we're not just a new group of guys trying to do something different. In addition to that, I want to point out that, you know, all of us have been working with town staff for almost two, two years at this point to get to the plan that is presented to you tonight. So this is, there's been a lot of discussions. There's been like six or seven meetings. Mr. Caston met Joe Hurd out here and walked the village to get some inspiration and look at, you know, design content, concepts for the buildings. We've been through two technical reviews with the staff and the, you know, Police Department, Fire Department, KAMA. The state has reviewed this. You know, I'm not going to go over everything that everyone else has said, but we have heard back from DOT. And at first glance, they don't have any issues with this. In your agenda packet, you might have seen a redevelopment summary that we prepared that outlines all of the conditions that we feel are being met in terms of the town's ordinance, the KAMA land use plan, and the 2027 vision of DUC. I'm not going to read all, read over all of those. A lot of them are regurgitated in the staff report as well. But we, we put a lot of time and effort into making sure that all of those conditions are met. There's been a lot of talk about the exceptions tonight. I want to make sure that it's understood that these exceptions are allowable exceptions in the ordinance. We're not asking for something that's not allowed in the ordinance. The parking reduction that we're asking for is permissible if we show that the conditions justifying it are being made. The rear setback reduction that we're asking for of, from 20 feet to 10 feet, is allowable in the ordinance, again, if we show how we're, you know, meeting the conditions to allow it. And the building separation issue actually isn't an exception. It flat out says that it has to be 20 feet unless it is sprinkled. It's not specifically stated on the plans that you have, but if you look on the plans along the southern property line, there is a structure out by the highway and a six-inch water line going into the site along the south. That is representative of our plans already to put a fire suppression system in all three of those buildings. So that, one, we can meet the town's zoning ordinance requirement of 10 feet, but also to meet the state's building code requirement that would require a sprinkler system anyway to meet 10 feet. We prepared this little exhibit here just to show in a more of a color rendering way what the development plan is going to look like. You know, all the green area is going to remain grass. The northern and southern parking lots that are shown are in the exact same place that the existing parking lots are. The two southernmost buildings, if you look closely, there's a red dashed line. I don't know if you guys can see that. But there's a red dashed line over top of them that represents the footprint of the existing building that's already there. So those two southernmost buildings basically take up the entire footprint of the existing building. And so in a way, we're adding one additional building to this, to this site. A couple of other points that I wanted to just make real quick is that, you know, and you guys have heard this, this is a redevelopment project. And it's important to think of it as a redevelopment project. Because, you know, yes, if it was new development, it may not meet certain codes of the town, but it also wouldn't meet, you know, the requirements of the state of North Carolina and other things. But the state has weighed in, KAMA, the official on doing sound front development, has weighed in and considers, since this is a redevelopment project, we are, they don't have a problem with it, that we're in compliance. The intensity of lot coverage that we're proposing here is actually a reduction of what's already there. So we're reducing reduction coverage, we're reducing runoff. There currently aren't any stormwater measures on that site. We will be providing stormwater measures on this new site. The new septic system that we would be putting in will be what's called a engineered pretreatment system, where we treat the effluent from this development to much, much higher standards than what's being done right now before it goes into the ground. So environmentally, you know, this is actually going to be an improvement to the site. With regards to parking, you know, there are, I believe that there are 31, maybe 32 parking spaces on the site now, 33 parking spaces on the site. And we are proposing 30. So yes, that's under what's required, but within the limits allowed by the ordinance. But I think it's important to state that from an intensity level, you know, this development is only going to have 30 parking spaces. We're not taking a site that has 33 parking spaces and turning it into a development that has 60 parking spaces. That's going to allow double the amount of traffic to come in and out and park on the site. So, you know, it's, it's keeping with the redevelopment standard that we're, our redevelopment approach that we're, we're trying to achieve there by just leaving the site, yes, things are being upgraded, there's new buildings, but we're using the two existing curb cuts that do not connect right now. The two existing parking lots, we're using them in the exact same location. There's a 6,000 square foot building there right now that we're proposing to basically turn into two. And we're adding one extra building. Let's see, a couple of other items of note, you know, the uses, the location and building design of the project are consistent with the images and character of Duck's Village. I mean, this is a mixed use of residential, retail, and restaurant. I mean, there's tons of that already existing on the boardwalk. You know, it's consistent in its use and its appearance. You know, the project isn't proposing to impact any wetlands. The project is proposing future connections to the boardwalk as pointed- As pointed out earlier, there's a proposed connection that would extend around to the waterfront shops in the future when that's figured out. And then there's also a proposed connection on the north end that would wrap back around and tie into the sidewalk. So the fact that this site is going to allow a connection to not only the town's boardwalk system, but also the sidewalk system along Duck Road is a huge benefit, and it's gonna allow great walking circulation, and it's the perfect justification for a parking reduction. If the ordinance allows a reduction in parking, I can't think of a situation where it would be more appropriate than a condition like that, where you've got, you know, a development at the end and at the juncture of the town's boardwalk and the sidewalks where everyone can, can, you know, is promoted to walk to. That was the boardwalk, so. You know, the rest of the comments, there were a lot, and if there were anything, if there were any comments in particular made by others that you guys would like to hear from me on, I'm happy to try to address those. You know, just real quick, I guess, on the driveway access, you have to understand that should this project move forward and get approved by Town Council, at that point is when we would, we would begin the full-blown final design of stormwater, wastewater, the sprinkler system, the water system, all of those things, grading and drainage, and then we would go and get all the required permits, including those from DOT. So we would be requesting a permit from DOT for the driveway permit connections, and we would be requesting permits from DOT for any encroachments. That being said, as stated earlier tonight, we did get this in front of the district engineer and allowed him to take a look at it. And, you know, based on his review, he's not concerned. These are two existing driveway connections that are on a 25 mile an hour road, and based on, you know, the quantity or lack thereof of parking spaces, he's just not overly concerned. The turn lane issue, you know, I can see a benefit in that. I believe right now, at the southern parking lot, the taper, the center taper there is about eight feet wide. I think that, in looking at the VHB plans, the full width center taper for a turn lane is 10 feet. So, you know, there certainly is a possibility to extend the full width left turn lane all the way up to that southern parking lot if necessary, because it's only widening there by two feet. I don't see the benefit or necessity of pulling it all the way through to the north parking lot, though, just based on it serving nine parking spaces. You know, we've, I've had discussions with the local health department, and they've reviewed the plan and are generally accepting of it. The water department has looked at this and is accepting of it, knowing that, you know, in the future, they're gonna get all the final design and details to actually issue the permits. Yeah, I know, there's, if there's any specific questions that you guys might have that I might be able to answer, I'm happy to do so.
A couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Is the project owner here tonight?
The representative for the project owner is here.
No, my question is, is the project owner here tonight?
Yeah.
My name's Tom Stewart. I'm the chief operating officer of Resort Realty of the Outer Banks Incorporated.
Address, please.
My address is personal, 214 West Los Colony Drive, Naggs Head. No, the owner is not present. Resort Realty is responsible for the property, and in turn, I am responsible 100% for its use, occupancy, and potential future development. But I work hand-in-hand with the owners, but they are not here. No, sir.
I'd like a question. Of the other retail establishments on the boardwalk, how many have apartments with three bedrooms above them?
I don't know the answer to that.
Donna, Cindy?
I know that there are other apartments along the boardwalk. I don't know the number of bedrooms. I know our old office at the waterfront shops, I believe, is now an apartment. I know there's an apartment above Amity, and I know there's an apartment above Wings. And beyond that, I'm not sure. I do not know the number of bedrooms at each one of these apartments.
I don't know who would want to take a stab at this question, but a fair amount of the analysis of the project is based on this development as a redevelopment site, a redevelopment project. The parking is totally different.
James, can you talk right into the mic? With your mask, it's hard to understand.
I'm sorry. The parking is different. The use of the site is different. The building is being totally demolished and new buildings built. Question, how would you define a redevelopment project where you're using any site that's not a virgin site?
Mr. Cofield, if it was, in my mind, new development is a vacant piece of property that has never had a structure on it. It's not a site that has a 6,000-square-foot building that's gonna be demolished in order to be replaced with other structures. This is, yes, the buildings will be new buildings, but this property has been developed. It is an improved property under the tax records. It's been taxed as an improved property. It's not a vacant piece of property. And so, there's two existing driveways there. They will remain. You heard the representative from Bissell say that there's 33 parking spaces there now, so it's a slight decrease. There's, there's nothing about the site plan that, if it was new development, would not be consistent with the zoning ordinance. Those exceptions for parking and for the setback are anticipated in the ordinance, and they are within the criteria that are outlined in the ordinance. The fire suppression and the 10-foot separation, that's not an exception. That's just a blanket allowance there, that 20 feet can be decreased to that, and that's consistent with the fire code. And so, whether you consider it new development, whether you consider it redevelopment, it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. Those exceptions are allowed. You just have to make the finding that they meet the criteria, and they do meet the criteria.
Donna, I'm not sure that I, where my head is on the issue, but my question was, and I will repeat it, is there any building or development on a site that is not virgin land that you would not consider redevelopment? That was my question.
And I don't know if I understand your question. In my mind, if there's a piece of property that has a structure on it.
It's redevelopment.
It's redevelopment, yes, sir.
Mr. Klobitz, one of the comments regarded the development up to the north property line, and on your rendering, it shows in green, and on the site plan, it's labeled as an easement, but it's hatched, which might have led someone to believe it was just an extension of that decking?
Well, and it may be.
So what is the current, what is the developer's plan at this point for that?
The developer's plan is to develop what is shown up on the screen and leave that grass. The area is hatched and is being set aside as an easement to be granted to the town so that the town may extend the boardwalk through that area to make the connection back to the sidewalk.
Okay, does, I mean, does that answer the concern of the commenter? I believe it was Mr. Wadgett. Or he wasn't.
Mr. Blues, I believe, was questioning that.
He was on the other side. This was the, one of the Property Association members. You were asking about development going up to the property line, and I just wanted to point out that it's not proposed at this point. Even though there's hatching there, that's an easement.
Right, and that may, that, right, and that may be the case in the future.
And I think that is, that is the town's intent.
... But in the drawings, you showed, you showed your house bowed down and boardwalk being put out. The other side, when you say restructure, it's a treason. But you separated, you should try and give a little separation to the joint parking line. And one of my bosses, heck, around, the whole project over there, you know, it's a 3D, put all the trees and separation.
Right.
People come there and have some benches with white wax, there's a launching area for stormers and predators. Another issue that you're gonna find, it's gonna come up, we're putting six bedrooms above there, and, you know, in town, they don't have any access to the sound, do they? They don't have any access across their front. There's no access to the ocean. It's an employee parking, it's an employee living. No, no, you didn't mention where you set standards of parking, where, you know, if my rationale is up to 50 people, and you need eight or 10 employees, where they are parked, where the shopping is. So, and you're allowing that, and you're allowing the, the parking, who's gonna want to come to that corner that Joe Hurd told us is gonna be a display? I'm sorry, am I not talking well? And you're not allowing, Joe said that they were gonna put a tower there so people could look out over the grasslands and watch the migrating birds and all that sort of thing with informational displays now. Maybe that's not gonna happen, but if that's a destination, should you allow for a little bit of parking for that? So I think, basically, my case is, I'm not against your project. I'm against the fact that you overbuilt it. You've got three buildings, you could make them two. You could take, you've got three floors, and all the commercial areas, there's only two floors on everything except one little, one spot in the waterfront shops goes, has some upstairs windows. You could, you could bring it down to two stories. You don't have to put three bedrooms there for the employees. I mean, it's not for families, is it? It's not gonna be on Airbnb, or is it, Mr. Stewart? Is it gonna be an Airbnb project? I'm sorry, I was referring to you, I'm sorry. Yeah, but anyway, it's just, if it's gonna be for people coming to Duck that would find a place that they could rent for a week, that'd be, give them the greatest income from that piece of property. On the other hand...
Sir.
Have to get permission to get to the ocean there.
Sir, thank you very much, but we've gotta move on ahead. Yeah, okay.
Again, thank you for letting us be here, and I appreciate the comments. I've seen some, and I've read yours, and we take them to heart. One thing I just want to mention is the history of trying to work with the town and have the conversations and get to this point and make the adjustments. My attitude has been, when the town said, "We think this would be a good idea," and they would look at me, my team would look at me ultimately, because I have to figure out how to fund this, I said, "Let's do it. Let's not put any roadblocks up. Let's make this a quality project, something that I can be proud of as an individual, and that the town can be proud of, something that would mesh aesthetically with everything that we see up and down, up and down the boardwalk." Go back a couple of years when I informally met with Joe, and we were just looking out there, Joe Hurd, and said, "Isn't this gorgeous? Wouldn't it be neat if it connected?" And started, I started thinking, like, "Wouldn't that be neat if it did connect?" Well, Resort Realty has got, I call it the albatross, this massive structure built in the 80s, and it doesn't fit the town of Duck as it stands right now. There was an opportunity to potentially turn it into something else, and we said, "No, it's time for us to move on and make ourselves a part of the structural architectural community here." So just a couple of things to note on that is that when it was a full-scale property management and real estate office, we had 10 real estate agents in that facility, we had a staff of five property managers, two maintenance technicians in their vans, going, coming and going all day, 150 properties in the Duck to Southern Shore area, guests coming in prior to Keel's entry, coming to get keys, coming to get linen, coming to tell us how much they love the house, and all those things. And on Saturdays, you could imagine, 150 families coming in and out, in and out. So I think what we see now is, and if you haven't lived here, you know, past three years or so, is that that was an extraordinarily busy, busy, busy business center with comings and goings all day long and into the night, starting at 7 o'clock in the morning. We don't see that now because it's a vacant piece of property, and frankly, an eyesore. We're hoping that with whatever we need to do and permits we need to get and further engineering and working with the DOT and all the different entities, that it's something that we can be proud of. Every community I've lived in where I've been involved with the project, I'm proud to say that during and up until it, it can be a little bumpy, and maybe we go back and forth, but I think that as neighbors, I want to be a good neighbor to the community, and I think I want to do something that we can all be proud of. Sounds like a sales pitch, but I've done this for 25, 30 years, and it doesn't work if it doesn't work for all of us in the end. And we're gonna make every effort to make it something that you can be proud of, the community can be proud of, the connectivity, I'm all for it. I did speak to Mark Sullivan and William Gray, who are on, I believe, the board of the community across the street earlier this week, and they did bring up, you know, "How about our property, the HOA amenity sound front?" And I said, "Well, whatever we need to do to make it work for you, we'll make it work." And they actually spoke about blocking that off and securing it. And I said, "Well, we can do that. Let's work together on it." And I wish they were here and they could echo what I just said. You can confirm it, Mr. Dennis, but that was the conversation that we had. So I'm not afraid to talk to those folks. I want to work together with them, and I'm hoping this evening, we can, we can get to a point where we can take the next step. Maybe there'll be more folks who want to come out and speak. I'm all for it. But this, this is something that, granted, the owners aren't here, but they've asked me to move forward with this, and I hope that we can, and we'll do, we'll do what we need to do within reason to make it make sense for everybody. So anyways, I've spoken enough. Thank you.
I'm sorry, would you come back? Give me your name again, because I didn't catch it before.
My name is Tom Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-T.
Question, Tom. Two questions, actually.
Yes, sir.
What is the rationale for not making the entire parking lot and the driveway made of pervious material?
The disposition, how is it?
We, we may end up having to do that in the end. Right now, what we are proposing is what is required by the ordinance. The town's ordinance allows a certain amount of impervious surface and requires a certain amount of pervious surface to be installed. And so what we are currently proposing is what the town requires as a minimum. When we get into the final design of this and start getting into the stormwater calculations and the runoff calculations, and we find that, you know, we may need some more storage or to reduce our runoff, then we would, the first thing we would do would be to start to expand the amount of pervious concrete that's being installed. to expand the amount of pervious concrete that's being, that's being proposed.
But you're aware of the town's thinking and the thinking in the residence about stormwater and runoff, and you're aware, I mean, there are some properties that are doing just that. All you have to do is look at the parking lot and the driveway here, Village Table and Tavern, so the, the best thinking going forward environmentally, because that's where we're headed, and I'm just struck why you just decided, but your answer is because that was the minimum and that's what you could do.
Well, it's, it's also cost. There's a substantial difference in the cost of permeable concrete than regular concrete. It's, so, you know, I'm not doing my client any justice by, you know, just flat out specifying twice as much pervious concrete that costs three times as much, just because when it's not required for, for any reason, I understand.
But I didn't say concrete, I said pervious material.
Right.
And you said you wouldn't be doing your client justice.
Correct.
My question is, are you doing the town justice?
Yes, we're meeting the, what the town's requirement is, so if the, yes.
And, Mr. Stewart. It was my own thinking, and you've heard several comments tonight, is there a reason why you couldn't make the project one bedroom, the two residential units, one bedroom, as opposed to three bedroom? I think, although I'm not sure, and no one here is sure, I think there are no three-bedroom residential units along the boardwalk, and there's only one building on the main boardwalk that's three stories, and that's an office. And is there a reason why, I mean, I think I know it, but I wanna hear you talk about it, it's your project, not our project, is there a reason why this is not two one-bedroom apartments with two stories for the building as opposed to two three-story apartments with three stories for the building?
I think in our analysis, I mean, highest and best use is the common term for the land, we'd like to get, you know, if we're going to invest, and this is not going to be an inexpensive project all around, that we, we would like to see something that would provide the greatest return. Frankly, whether or not there's three-bedroom, two-bedroom, or one-bedroom apartments on the sound side, I don't understand how that's, why that particularly matters or, or not. It's, it's something that we'd like, that we'd like to offer.
Can I help you? One, is the difference in full parking spaces? Two, it's the difference in the height of the building? Three, it's the intensity of the site? But I'm sure I'm not telling you something you don't know, I'm surprised if you don't know that.
Yeah. It's, it's, you know, when you look at a project like this, you go, well, you know, what would be the best way to take advantage of this? Like I said, it's the redevelopment, you know, to get the, the piece of property in the state to develop or build is very expensive. I, I don't think that anybody would come in and say, let's, let's not, I mean, we didn't ask for four bedrooms, we're not looking for anything greater than that. We, we limited the size of the, the third, the third story so that we could keep the, the lines broken up and keep it aesthetically pleasing. You know, we, we would like to see three bedrooms, you know, that, that's our hope, that we can do that. And I understand the parking issue, it is, as I mentioned before, when I go back and look at how the property was used previously and the activity, I, I think that, you know, I think we can accommodate what we need to accommodate. Three bedrooms doesn't necessarily mean three vehicles. That's not our experience, you know, generally speaking in the property management side. So, I'm, I hope that's answered.
I feel like my biggest concern on this project is that it is overbuilt from the standpoint of the existing parking, and I think from my experience in Duck, you're gonna have a, whoever ends up in the restaurant or in the retail operations are gonna have a parking nightmare, and I, if the regulations call for 35, which to me is, that's pushing it, but I, I think you need every parking spot that the formula calls for. There's gonna be a lot of unhappy people trying to get into that parking lot, can't find a place to park, and going somewhere else, and that's my biggest concern, is I think y'all have overbuilt for the parking area y'all have available.
So, next question.
So, I have an issue I'd like to throw out there, and I, I rationalized it in my own way, but I think that you probably had conversations with Joe and the technical review that you may have discussed. You've got two bedrooms, I mean, two three-bedrooms apartments over top of one in Building A and one in Building B. We have an ordinance for zoning that says 156 dot 036B8, that says dwellings that exist over top of commercial buildings cannot exceed 50% of the floor space of the commercial building. Obviously, with, with one apartment being over 1,250 square feet, the other one being over 1,250 square feet, I'm assuming that you looked at that to the standpoint, since this is a group development, that the entire space of the group, and then 50% of that, which would make the numbers or the size of the apartments work. Going back and reiterating on that, Building A, 2171 square feet, Building B, 3083 square feet, and Building C, 2,800 square feet, is a total of 8654 square feet. Looking at the apartment over top of B is 1,833 square feet, the apartment over top of A is 1521, total loads up, it's 3,354 square feet. So to me, that is the way that you, I'm assuming that you looked at that, is the gross space for the entire development, the group development project divided by two met that requirement?
Yeah, I can answer that. I didn't know if you were, so, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I'm assuming that this section, if I remember correctly, that you're referring to where it indicates that the residential section cannot only be 50%, is, is in the specific village commercial zoning section under the permitted uses table?
That's correct.
So, and, and I understand that. The way that I have interpreted this from the beginning is, is that, that, that is a requirement for someone asking for a permitted use, meaning that they don't have to go before any boards to get an approval for. They can just walk into the zoning department with an application to put up to 50% of a residential space above a commercial dwelling and get a permit, and it doesn't have to be reviewed through the boards, it doesn't require a special use permit or any of the other stuff that we are doing. We are doing all of this because this is a group development, which requires a special use permit, so I have looked at this from the beginning as a whole, that this is a group development, and that section or that particular item that you're referring to is a separate use that is permitted by right. Like, if, does that make sense? Like, somebody can just come in, and as long as they meet that standard and the setbacks, Sandy can write them a permit for that, and you guys don't ever even hear or know about it. It's, it's permissible by right, but we're not asking for that, we're, we're asking for a group development that comes with all of its standards, but allows other things. And so we have approached this from the beginning of, we're asking for a group development, not a group development plus a permitted right residential commercial structure. Does that make sense?
I'm gonna say that you, you, you missed what he was saying. The ordinance says that you have commercial structure, an accessory structure, this accessory structure can only be 50% of the floor area of the commercial area, and his question is, is has that been applied to the commercial square footage of the entirety of the group development? And based on the numbers that we've seen and the math that we've done, that's the way that they've applied that.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, yes.
I misunderstood.
Okay, that's what I was, I was, when I was going through this, that, that's how it made sense to me, but I just wanted to validate that.
That's, that would appear the way that it's been applied, and we're going to, again, I hate to use the word assume, but since we've gotten this far to this point, that that's been what Joe was comfortable with, and that he had the same interpretation as the engineer.
And I can actually attest to that, because I brought this up with Joe when we were doing the staff report, and I, was one of my questions, and he explained that that's, you know, he looked at it as a group development, and as such, you're, they're still below the 50%.
Group development.
Yes, yes, so it wasn't an assumption, we'd have that confirmed by Mr. Hurd.
Are there any special, anything special about the apartments other than the regular apartments? Are there, are there anything with employees? Are, is there going to be a reduction in price for trying to house some of our employees, which we have a pretty difficult time with here? One of the biggest problems in Duck is housing.
I'm gonna have to let Mr. Stewart answer that, I don't, I don't know.
That's a, that's a terrific question, and we have purposefully not designated that specifically for any use. We, our first impression, our first thoughts were that we, we have a need for employee housing, and we do have folks that we'd like to be able to, to bring up to this area, but, you know, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet, but it would be ideal for us, absolutely, to have employee housing there.
So is that something you would, you would consider?
Oh, absolutely.
Something you could attest to now?
That we would consider it? Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. No, it's, I'm, we're, we're actually looking at that actively.
It would be good for merchants in Duck, for sure.
Any other questions? All right. We need to discuss it among ourselves.
Okay.
And see where we're going with this. Do you have anything to say, Mike, after you've been sitting here listening to this?
A little bit about the permeable pavers.
Pardon?
A little bit about the permeable pavers. I suspect when this project goes for full engineering, that a, there's gonna be much more permeable paving on this. I typically like to see a solid drive aisle shedding onto permeable pavers in the parking spaces, it's a good way to manage stormwater. You can build storage in the, in the gravel below the permeable paver, whether it's a turf stone paver, which I don't like, or it's, you know, a precast interlocking paver, or, or even porous concrete. We're gonna have to be real careful to not shed any water towards the street on this project, because we've already got the water flowing down a super elevated roadway, so I'll work, and Dave and I have worked together on projects like this before, so I, I feel very comfortable that we can come up with a solution that's gonna prevent the sidewalk from flooding and becoming a nuisance, so.
Okay. There's been an awful lot in this project, and I think it's got everybody concerned about every little piece of it. So we gotta put it all together and decide what we're gonna do. How do you feel about it, Randy?
You would start with me, right? I, I think in, in judging at the long talks and the technical review that the staff has had with the, the client, I think they have addressed the issues. Obviously, we're not privileged to see some of those issues that were out of, out of compliance before those discussions started, and they mentioned tonight that there have been modifications that have brought those back into compliance. There's a list of things that need to be met, or we need to see further going down the road, that the staff outlined as far as their contingencies in order for this to be totally finalized. So as, as I sit right here right now, I, I, I'm, I'm fine moving forward with this.
I do have one little question that I forgot about. There's a list, which I can't find amongst all this paper, about everything that it applies to on the town that is correct. For instance, our 2027 stuff, and, and, where is that?
Near the end of the staff report.
Well, I looked at it.
So, you wanna look at page four through six?
No, I'm not on that.
And then page six and seven lists the conditions that are recommended by staff.
Well, that's not what I'm referring to. At any rate, let me ask.
Are you talking about in the redevelopment plan where they enumerate the, okay, so that's later in the report, but.
There's a list, there's about 15 items.
It is a repeat, though, of the list that you were just referred to, it's just, Mr.
You're talking about the findings and condition, the.
All right, yeah, that's not, all right, yeah. How, probably Sandy, you would probably actually be the best one to answer this question. Do you know how this compares to the 2027 plan, where it, our plan where it says this is in compliance with, with that, and we believe that this is, you know?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Our 2027 plan.
It says in the second paragraph on page six, it's staff's opinion that the proposed redevelopment is consistent with the 2027 Duck vision statement, the Duck Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, and does, you don't think that, that any part of this has a problem with our 2027 plan?
I don't think so.
Okay. That's the answer I wanna hear. James?
I think it's a creative use of the site.
James, can you speak into the mic again?
I think it's a creative use of the site. I think that the project is headed in the right direction, but I don't think it's there. I think at this point, it's too, the intensity of the site is too, it's too dense, it's trying to maximize too much, and it has negative impacts, I think, on the development. I think that the development as proposed in front of us is headed in the wrong direction from what citizens in Duck want. They want to decrease parking issues in town. This, in my view, does not do this. Citizens in Duck want to ameliorate the traffic problems in Duck. This does not, this project as proposed does not do that. I think it, it increases what will be the, the traffic congestion in town. And to some degree, it's because the, trying to do too much on the site. You know, my question about the number of bedrooms as an example, if they reduced the bedrooms from three to two, there would not be a request here for parking allowances, because that would reduce the number of required parking spaces under the town formula by four spaces. There's some things that I think the project could do to make it a better project, rather than trying to maximize every aspect of the project, which I think overall reduces the attractiveness of the project, and I don't think it is in the direction of what the town wants to do. The citizens in Duck have voiced repeatedly, and quite well, the issue of parking, they have, they have. And I don't think it is in the direction of what the town wants to do. The citizens in DUC have voiced repeatedly and quite well the issue of parking. They have, they have spoken quite well to the issue of traffic congestion, and this does nothing to ameliorate those, those problems. My view is that when we look at projects, some might be neutral, but it's hard to look at a project that will be neutral on the issues that the citizens in DUC have spoken to. I think the last thing we wanna do is to approve projects that increase the problems that the citizens in DUC have spoken to. And I say citizens in DUC over and over again because I think that's our job. And so we are not reducing the, the traffic problems and congestion by increasing the problems of traffic and congestion. We're not reducing the parking issue by increasing the shortage of parking spaces in town. So, I mean, I think it's an attractive project, but they're trying to do too much, maximize, and I won't give, I won't speak to their intent, but in most development, developers try to maximize the income from a project. And I think in doing that on this project, it is obvious to me that it has negative impacts for the town and the citizens of DUC. So as proposed, I'm not in favor.
Mark?
Um, I tend to agree with Randy. I, I think that it meets the requirements of the ordinance, and, and I think it does so pretty clearly. I was open to adding a condition regarding the treatment of the easement at this period in development to, to give some privacy to the association area to the north. And then they could work out, you know, whatever they wanted to do with the town, if, if the town did take that option to develop it. But I, I don't know how necessary that, that really is. That was just one thing that I heard that, that we could probably add if, if the developer was, if the applicant was open to that. I would also point out that, I mean, you know, our ordinance is designed in such a way that these exceptions are written into it. And so we're sort of setting applicants up to, to make the case that they've made. If, as James says, we wanna ameliorate these issues, it's not really the developer's responsibility to do that. It's our responsibility as the planning board, and, and the ordinance needs to be changed. So I, I feel like with the application that we have and the ordinance that we have, I'm 100% comfortable with it. I, I would say, you know, we could discuss that condition of, of a little more buffer there until that easement's developed, but that's where I am with it.
Tim?
I, I like the project, but I think it is overbuilt, and it is going to increase to the parking problem and the traffic problem on Duck Road. And I'm not in favor of it. As it is designed, I would want it to be smaller in size, that would take up less of the parking. It would create a requirement for less parking.
I like it, but I think it's overdone. I don't think this is something for the town. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel. I, I do think that there are some loose ends, and I think they could be tied up, and I think people could, could find a better, a better reason to like it. I, I don't think that with this present configuration that I could support this. I would like something else to be done with the parking. I, I agree with what James said, and I also agree with what Mark said, but I'm right in the middle. And at this particular point, the way it's done, I think more work has to be done before I could approve it. And that's all I'd have to say this time. Gentlemen, had nothing else to say? I think we could have a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask sort of a simultaneous question of the board members and the applicant? Obviously, parking is, is the issue for the board. We are permitted under the ordinance to make conditions, to add conditions that, that staff hasn't suggested. Would it satisfy the board, and is it in the applicant's interest to reduce any of the capacity? I, Mr. Cofield mentioned turning them into one-bedroom apartments. Removing the third floor from one would actually make it a two-bedroom. Is there any reduction that you're open to in an effort to not have to reapply to us? And board members, is there any reduction in the request for parking that you're open to that would move the application forward? Whoever wants to go first can answer. I guess actually the applicant's opinion is more important than ours, because if they don't wanna reduce, then it's not worth it.
Yes, we are open to hearing your ideas, if it'll help us tonight. And secondly, I, I'd like to hear a little more specifically what you're, what you're thinking. But we are open to that, answering the question.
Okay. Are, are the board members open to it? Because I have a suggestion, so.
Open to what?
To, by reducing the number of bedrooms, that would reduce the, the parking exception that is being asked for.
Or another option is, or a combination of reducing the retail square footage?
Potentially. I would also point out to the board that when we revamped the village commercial development option and made it a special exception, we eliminated the ability to reduce the rear yard setback by 50%. Had we not done that, the building would likely be 10 feet closer to the sound at this point, which would also have gotten us the parking spaces. So I just wanna point out that we are in this situation, to some degree, we, we bear some responsibility for it. But anyway, two bedrooms and parking, it would, is that something we could work on or, or not?
I would say that I don't wanna sit here and design the developer's project. I don't think that it's our business to do that. If there was one simple thing the developer said, yeah, well, I'll do this. But there are so many loose ends here, and it's not our place to redesign the developer's project. What's in front of us is a proposal for a project, and that's what, that's what I'm speaking to. I mean, there might be some other things that I would, wouldn't want to see and propose, but I'm, I spoke to what's in front of me.
May I have a suggestion?
Sure.
It sounds like to me, regardless of how the parking is reduced, whether it's through seats at the restaurant, or retail square footage, or number of bedrooms, the issue is the number of parking spaces. And so if this board is willing to accept or propose a condition that says as long as we can work out a plan that meets what the exact parking requirement is, this board would be accepting of that. And then as we move forward, we can discuss the details of how we're actually going to achieve that. I mean, at that point, we won't be asking for the exception. We would be meeting the letter of the ordinance exactly, and we can decide exactly how we're gonna do that. I don't think that, you know, it will be difficult to really come to a conclusion of that tonight, but I think that the end conclusion is just trying to get rid of four parking spaces. So just wanted to put that out there.
Is it four or five? It's 34.5, and it's reduced down to, well, that's important, you're talking about, I think it's five spots.
Sandy, do you recall these?
It's 34.5.
It's 34.5, so. They do, you guys do round up? Okay, so then five spaces.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just help you guys get to the point that you need to get. What I'm hearing is that it's the consensus of the board that the exception to the parking reduction is not agreeable.
It is not, and it's not the only thing.
Okay.
I mean.
I, I think for staff's point, writing up the minutes, and for the developer when he walks out of here to understand it, I would also ask that you give him specific instructions or direction on whether you're okay with the exception for the reduction in the rear yard setback, so that he knows that that's going to be a problem going forward as well. Just, he, he want, I'm just trying to save time for everybody here because he doesn't want to go in and change the parking and still have the 10-foot rear yard setback, thinking that that exception is okay from the planning board's standpoint, and then come back in front of you guys, and then you guys say, no, we don't like that either. So I would give him exactly what it is that you find distasteful about the site plan.
Donna, I can say that there are a lot of issues and, and, that were discussed here tonight, and I don't think it's for us to say, if you do this, then we'll approve it. If, you know, you've heard some unreadiness tonight. Everyone in the room has heard unreadiness tonight. And if the developer's willing to go back and speak to those issues and come back with another proposal, then that's what we'll look at. But we're not gonna sit here and piecemeal a developer's proposal, period. We're not gonna do that.
There's been talk about the size of the development as well. So I have to agree, there's a lot of little pieces.
Mr. Chair, do you have a comment from the?
Uh, we have a comment? Okay, we're, we're gonna move ahead on this, so what is your comment?
Can you come to the mic, Mr. Carter?
[inaudible] We're not giving back about the parking. We've been on wall there, everybody's perfect. Our neighbor is trying to discuss it and actually trying to get a point on school talk, sort of, to, you know, have some advanced conversations. We're not opposed to this development. We're just opposed to it. There's one thing, you're gonna get with the plan. So I agree with James, that, that we should go back, first board, to ask them to go back and work on this thing a little bit more. And our neighbor, some of us in the neighborhood, extra skill, Minnesota gets extra skills and traffic and, and other things. I think we'd like to bring this to the table and talk to the board. I, I'm with James, and I, what I'm saying, my oldest event, we.
Thank you. We aren't actually either, but we would like more work to be done on this. And I think there's much more than just parking and their size, there's a whole lot of things. Therefore, the board will consider a, a motion. I would be glad to take it.
Mr. Chair, I move that the application presented today for the development, well, I'll read it, application by Viso Professional Group on behalf of the project owner, Phantom Enterprise LP, for a special use permit to redevelop the existing property in the Village Commercial District at 1, at 1248 Duck Road with the pen, as a group development to include a 49-seat restaurant with two three-story buildings, each with 1,250 square foot retail space and three-bedroom accessory unit on the second and third floors, that the application, the proposal be denied.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Anybody? Doesn't mean this is dead, but it just means you might have to go back and do some more work. That's, I think, the only way we can look at it right now.
All right. Just in the discussion, I thought there's a lot of merit to saying the only special exception that, that I'm opposed to is the parking, and then to let the, the developer redesign this to comply the project to the parking. So I, you know, Donna's question about, you know, what am I or others opposing, you know, not the setback, but just the, the issue of, I don't think we can make an exception to the parking.
You did. Motion's been made and, and seconded. We get to make a vote. All in favor? Please say aye. Aye.
Did you have a?
I had a comment.
The motion to deny.
Yeah, that's common, too.
Aye.
All, all in favor? Three in favor. Not in favor? Say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes, three to two.
Explain to me how you guys do this. Can they deny? I mean, can?
They can deny a recommendation.
Under chapter 160D, you guys didn't change your ordinance and said that planning board recommendation isn't, is just, isn't, isn't.
Oh, it's not.
It's ridiculous. You didn't let me comment on that.
It's just advisory.
You said further.
But nobody said anything.
I can tell them.
Ignore me.
Just, I just wanna make sure that the planning board understands that even though that you denied recommending their application to the town council, they still have the right to take it to town council?
Yeah.
At their main meeting?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we were clear.
That's up to you.
I think we have a member from the Home Builders Association here that came specifically for that agenda item, so to the extent that we can discuss it, I think that might be.
Move ahead with it?
I think we should move ahead with it, yeah.
Move ahead with what?
Move it ahead with the next item.
We're gonna move ahead with the next item?
Yeah.
Fine. Which is the text amendment consideration?
Yeah.
Subsection 150.26C and I, the elevation certificate requirements. Want to get us started on that, Sandy Orr?
I'll be glad to. Chairman, this is a, a discussion on a proposal to the DUC flood damage prevention ordinance, chapter 150 of the DUC Town Code of Ordinances. When the ordinance was amended in 2020 to include the local elevation standards that apply, an elevation standard to the X zones, there was language in there that required the submission of an elevation certificate for those properties whose natural topography is already at the local elevation standard that the town of DUC established. And subsequent to that being adopted, and now that it's been applied over the past couple of years, the issue has arisen of whether there needs to be some flexibility added to the flood ordinance to waive that requirement for an as-built elevation certificate when the natural topography or the finished grade is at, or to, the 12 feet, I believe it's 12 feet, that the town of DUC has. And so there's been discussions on this up to this point, I believe, based on some staff memos that I've seen from Mr. Hurd. And the staff has drafted some language in there. There is an analysis of what the other towns in Dare County and what Dare County does and the language that they have in their flood damage prevention ordinance, and it varies. Most of them allow the elevation certificate to be waived in the shaded X and the X zone if it is demonstrated during the construction process on the survey, if there's topographical elevation marks that, that it meets that standard, that you don't have to have the elevation certificate. And so there is three drafts in the, in your memo there. They, when I was drafting the language, based on my conversations with CND, I was trying to anticipate the situations where this may be applied, and sometimes that's easy to do, sometimes it's not. The third option there is the one that is similar to the language that, that other towns in Dare County has, and it's the simplest of the three, of the four options. Actually, option four is not to change the ordinance, but option three is the simplest of those, that just says that. of those that just says that in lieu of the finished construction elevation, the as-built survey can certify the finished grade. And I'll stop right there and let you guys have any, ask any questions or make any comments. I don't know if Mr. Robinson has any comments. I know that Mr. Garrity, who is the government affairs liaison for the Outer Banks Home Builders, has sat through this discussion tonight, and I think he's here to provide public comment on this. And I will say that the Outer Banks Home Builders was very involved in all of the discussions when we were doing the changes to the flood damage prevention ordinances, and so I'm sure that he has some input for you guys, and I'll stop right there.
Mark, didn't we do this for you?
I brought it up. We didn't do anything with it.
We didn't do anything in 2020?
No. Joe and Sandy said, well, we talked about it, but they said they were waiting for the, what is the new?
Risk rating 2.0.
Risk rating 2.0. Yes.
Right, risk rating 2.0. Risk rating 2.0 is the new rating system that the National Flood Insurance Program uses, and your structures are rated on data that they have developed, and it doesn't necessarily use the elevation certificate. So before risk rating 2.0, your elevation certificate was used to rate your structure for insurance purposes, and it was also used for regulatory purposes. Now with risk rating 2.0, it's an option to use your elevation certificate, but it's not required for insurance rating purposes, but it still is required for regulatory purposes. But it gets, it gets further convoluted because you're in a shaded X zone, which is, which is not really a flood zone, and I'm sure you guys had all of those discussions when you were doing your flood damage prevention ordinance, and you understand it.
Yeah, we talked all about that and come up with the math, didn't we? Mark, didn't we do the math on that then?
That was when we changed the regulatory flood protection elevation. This is just a question of whether, at this point, we verify the elevation of the structure. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, but three times in a flood zone, right, proposed, under construction? How many times?
We, in a flood zone, we require a proposed construction elevation certificate, and you are encouraged to get an under-construction elevation certificate, but we do not require it, and you are required to get a final finished construction elevation certificate.
So two?
Two. Outside of the flood zone, so in a shaded or non-shaded X zone, you are not required to provide an elevation certificate if you can show us on a survey that the elevation is above our local elevation standard of 10 feet. At the completion of the project, we do require a finished construction elevation certificate.
Right.
That's something that we have done since this new floodplain prevention ordinance was put in place. We are very similar in respect to Kitty Hawk's requirement as well as Nag's Head. Kitty Hawk, interestingly, has always required a finished construction elevation certificate regardless of flood zone. So when I asked them if they had any issues with the ordinance, they said no. And Nag's Head has had some contractors that have argued the need for it when you can show it on a survey.
Well? Yeah? I remember all that we discussed.
Just a question. So if there is an issue with getting the elevation certificate at the end, then the cost, the burden is on the homeowner? Am I understanding this correctly?
It's an added cost, of course, yes. And now, I did verify in comparison to what we had presented in July of 2021, and I polled four different surveyors to find out what the cost is for a finished construction elevation certificate, and it varied from $350 to $600, depending on whether it was in connection with the entire development project, or whether it's, I just need a finished construction elevation certificate. So, you know, there's certainly some fluctuation, and none of them would give me exact numbers because each case is different depending on what is needed.
So at least one of these options is to save the homeowner the cost of doing it twice?
The cost of doing a single elevation certificate. This would only apply in shaded X or X zones where the survey upfront shows that they are above 10 feet.
So right now, we don't require it for X and shaded X?
No, we don't require it upfront.
Upfront, but at the end, we require it.
We require it at the end from everybody.
So that's wherein the $300 or $700 are incurred. And if we didn't require it there, it would be $75 or something I saw?
You'd probably have to get it. It would be part of your survey, and they can pretty much factor that into the total cost.
And the point is, it's not, it's an expense for no value for that homeowner, because it's a, now with the new risk rating 2.0, you don't even need it to get flood insurance, but generally in an X flood zone, they're not getting flood insurance.
I might argue that that's not entirely the case, depending on what happens when these flood zones.
I'm sorry, that's what, Sandy?
I would argue that that might not be entirely the case, depending on what happens when these flood zones go back to what they're supposed to be.
But then they would need a new elevation certificate anyway.
It's not entirely clear to me what we're giving up here. It's not entirely clear to me what we're giving up.
What we're giving up?
Yeah.
We're not giving up anything. We're verifying that it complies through another route, a $75 route instead of.
It's already been done.
Right.
The homeowner can always get it on their own.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chairman, I move, Donna, help me out. Was it option three that we said was the simplest or four?
Option three, well, option four is not doing anything. Option three is the simplest one.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the draft ordinance as written using option three. Do I need to read that into the record, or can we just say option three?
I think they get it, that the motion was to recommend that option three be an amendment to the Duck Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance.
Okay. And that's ordinance 22-04 for those folks out there listening at home.
Okay. Need a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, passes, five ayes. All right, we'll move on. Move on, we'll go to the item four on the list, which is the approval of minutes from February 9th, 2022, our meeting at that point. Anybody have anything to say on that?
Move that be approved as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded that the, that it be approved as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous?
Aye.
Aye. Pass the motion. Staff comments.
We mailed you two guys together for staff for this one?
Yeah, staff can be singular or plural.
I would just like to thank Donna Creve for assisting us.
Absolutely.
In Joe's absence. I would also just like to ask that everybody please keep him in your prayers. He is, he is still struggling to get home. We are hoping that the next time I hear from him, that he's telling me he's got a confirmed date to head back to his residence where he will continue rehab. I know in normal planning board meeting fashion, Joe would give you an overview of what happened at the council meetings. So since we didn't have a March planning board meeting, I wanted to let you know that there were several things that happened. They moved to, they approved the consent agenda, which included several, the minutes and budget amendments. They moved to authorize the public hearing of ordinance 2203, which was an ordinance amending the penalty for violation from a misdemeanor to a civil penalty in the town's flood damage prevention ordinance. That was actually passed at the April meeting. It was also the consent of the council to defer establishment of the town property advisory committee until all five members could be present, because Tony Shiano had been out, so they expected him at the April meeting. At the April meeting, they again deferred that, if I am correct, noting that they moved to suspend establishing that committee, but would leave it open for establishing committees as needed by town staff for specific projects. The motion carried three to two. Monica Thibodeau moved to have town staff work on grading the beach nourishment accesses sooner rather than later. We would normally do it after Easter in preparation for Memorial Day. There was a outcry for that to happen sooner, so that has been completed, that was started after the March meeting, and it has recently been completed as of last weekend. And then Monica Thibodeau also moved to direct town staff to prepare a letter for the mayor's signature requesting that Weeks Marine revisit their beach nourishment schedule, which has us scheduled the end of, mid, it was originally mid-August, now it's mid-September for our nourishment project. That was March, April. The consent agenda was passed 5-0. That included a resolution declaring the month of April as child abuse prevention month and declaring the month of April as fair housing month. They passed the ordinance 2203 regarding criminal penalties, town advisory committee, and they also passed resolution 2206 and 07, which were, the 2206 was in support of construction of the Mid-Courtuck Bridge and its continued inclusion in the state transportation improvement plan, and 07 was a resolution of the town council supporting a Wright Brothers tribute and museum and an observatory. Then outside of that, we had a variance application that went to the Board of Adjustment that Donna Creve was kind enough to assist us with on April 4th, that did approve replacement of a soundside pool that was demolished back in its existing location, 5.86 feet from the rear setback. Our bulkhead projects at Norbanks and between Penntail and Woodduck have been completed. For those that have not been up to Penntail and Woodduck, to our rest area, it's very posh, and the bench is very comfortable, and it's great for a sunset view. The trail improvements between Oyster Catcher and the previous improvements at Blue Heron have been completed. Our beach planting season has come to an end, and we're sorry that we didn't see all of our planning board members out there, but we saw most of them. And as far as the brick project and the raising, we are still, Drew did just reach out to Kane Riggins, which is, who's with the State Department of Emergency Management, to see if there was any update, and we still have no word from FEMA as to whether or when we will be granted that award. And I believe our community planner is in the back, and James had said he might consider coming to the meetings. He is here in a role, making sure that we are live-streamed for the public. We will now be live-streamed for future meetings. And we also have Kay Nichols. Kay, you have anything? Donna?
No, I'm good, thank you.
That's all I have.
I have a question. Where were we supposed to be? Planning board?
Where? What do you mean?
You were going through the items. The planning board was supposed to be there.
Oh, I said, I was sorry that I didn't see all of the planning board members at beach planting this year, but we saw most of them, and I will still work on getting the others out there at some point. Yes, I'm guilting you. And he who has left the room.
Sandy, just let me know when you open for supervisors, and I'm your guy.
All right. Let's move on to item six, board comments. Any comments?
No.
Where's our other one? He's in the head. Okay, I have no comments. Move on to adjournment.
I move adjournment, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good deal.